We are now recording.
Okay, call to order the Lowell City Council regular meeting for Tuesday, April 20th at 7:01. Roll call, please.
Mayor Bennett?
Here.
Councilor Harris?
Here.
Senator Stratus?
Present.
Councilor Druck?
Here.
Councilor Myers?
Here.
Okay, we're all present and accounted for. You know, stand for the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to their government, with its standing one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Next up is approval of the agenda. I have one change under the new business, number four, motion for the first reading for the ordinance 303. That needs some more administrative work, so we're gonna put that off until our May 6th Thursday meeting. And what we'll do, in addition to the work session, we'll also have a small regular session to cover a couple items. We'll get our first reading in then, and the second reading will be at the end of the month, so it won't really be a change or in the final reading would have been. Of course, it won't go into effect until 30 days after the second reading if it's approved. So we'll have 1, 2, 3 be the same, and then 5, 6, 7 will become 4, 5, and 6. Any other changes? Anybody see? Hearing any? Not seeing any? Okay. Next up is the consent agenda. Okay, council members may request that item be removed from the consent agenda to be discussed as the first business item of the meeting. What we'll be approving is the minutes from the city council regular meeting for March 16th, 2001. Approval of the minutes for the city council work session and executive session from April 6th, 2021. If I didn't say 2021 on the first one, I meant to. Final financial report by February 2021, and check register for March 2021. Anybody want to remove anything? Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving of this consent agenda consent by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any? Next up, I see we have a few people on the line. Imagine, I think the city administrator may have a mailed in public comment. Want to cover this, public comments. Speakers will be limited to three minutes. The council may ask questions, but will not engage in discussion or make decisions based on public comment at this time. The mayor may direct the city administrator to follow up on comments received. When called, please state your name and address. For the record, direct all comments to the city council through the mayor. And Mr. Cottle, I understand we have one written report that we'd like to submit.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Due to the changes in our meeting protocol, due to COVID-19 pandemic, we are allowing citizens to submit written comments for the city council meeting. We did receive one hand-delivered comment this morning specifically for this public comment period. And I will go ahead and read that for the record. This is from Mark G. Bennett at 512 Sunridge Lane. dated 19 April 2021. Dear Mayor Bennett, I am writing to express my concern over the potentially hazardous condition of several parcels of land owned by the city in their proximity to residential housing. The acreage was identified in the Lowell Parks and Open Space Master Plan as a former railroad right-of-way on the east side of town. The acreage is an undeveloped wooded area proposed as a future site for a nature park with hiding and picnic facilities. Lane County identifies it as tax map and tax lot numbers 190114130630 and 1901141306400. The city properties are bordered by residential housing along West Foundry Road, Wetlow Drive, and Sunridge Lane. The Lowell Parks and Open Space Master Plan notes that the area has been identified as a wildfire hazard by the fire chief. However, this places it as a priority for grant-funded management efforts. It also states it is recommended that the existing stands of trees be managed to decrease fire hazards while maintaining forest health. There are a number of other statements made in the text and tables prioritizing the fire hazard mitigation and brush control as high. This spring's high winds and temperatures are already contributing to an increasing level of drought. A resulting reduction in vegetation productivity occurs, allowing plants to be more susceptible to ignition sources. A Lane County co-op power line traverses along the south end of the site. High winds can blow nearby trees and their branches in the power lines, sparking fires. Other examples of man or nature caused ignition sources could be lightning or discarded cigarettes. If the park master plan has been kept current, I see the document as one path to work through a portion of this issue. However, I am unaware of its current status and would like to request an update. In my review, the park master plan provides a roadmap and long-term development of the site and identifies sources of funding to accomplish it. If I can be of assistance in that effort, please let me know. As for the short term, however, administratively, the park master plan recommends a modification of the system development charge ordinance. The plan states currently, the city of Lowell charges a capital improvement fee, but no reimbursement fee for parks' development. Another consideration is to review the details of Park Master Plan's capital improvement plan to determine if it is appropriate for inclusion into an annual budgeting process with the goal of providing ongoing park maintenance. I would also expect that there are near-term fiscal improvements that could be implemented to immediately lessen the site's exposure. I'm relatively new to the area, and as such, don't yet know the ropes, so please advise how I might be able to exist.
Thank you. Anyone else? You know what?
Yeah.
Have a seat, or pick up there.
I did want to share my journey.
Yeah, okay.
George Wild, 200 Marina Vista Drive.
You can sit down if you want.
Oh, it's fine.
Okay.
I'm understanding, I'm not silly. 200 Marina Vista Drive. I'm still very concerned about the speeding on North Shore Drive. I have mentioned this previously. And over the weekend, and most nights, the two guys that are trying to kill themselves on motorcycles. And when they get to the bottom of Marina Vista, they must be doing at least 60. And I have a pretty good idea about speed, because I usually go, or I've been in my youth, well aware of speed. And they must be doing 100 by the time they get to the Marina. And it's pretty soon somebody's gonna get killed. And there again, in the morning, the big trucks are going up there like... I've got one swear, there are people that are worried that describe it. And there's a lot of people trying to walk to and from the lake, and they get sucked in with the draft on it, and it is dangerous. And my wife walks to her free dog every morning, and she has to fear for her life many times. And I think that we should be able to do something. We have those monitors out here on Highland, is it? I don't know what good they're doing there in the 20 mile an hour block, when we can make better use of them over here. And I really would like to see some attention drawn to this before they have a serious accident. I really would. And if you could do something with that, I would appreciate it very much. And I know all the people around there who watch this just happening, and they're walkers with it. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe we discussed moving the speed sign off of Highland to somewhere else. We might get with Max, possibly with Neil, and see if he can go ahead. And I think his suggestion is valid.
And it's still in the city limits at that point, too, by the 45 or 40 mile an hour speed limit, or whatever it is.
Anyone else? Okay. Okay, not seeing any?
Okay.
Next up is the city administrator's report. Mr. Cottle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city councilors, citizens. Good evening. We've had various committee meetings the past few weeks. We had a parks committee meeting where they approved the motion to recommend the city council prioritize irrigation and shade trees for structures for city parks. The planning commission held a meeting. Some of the decisions that they made will be on your agenda for your upcoming work session and special meeting. The Blackberry Jam Festival meeting was canceled, and we need to reschedule so that we can start planning for upcoming events. We have some good news, some exciting news on the library renovation project. You authorized me to solicit competitive proposals from architects in March. We received proposals last week. The selection committee met today to start scoring those proposals. We have some people selected and some interviews that we're starting to set up for next week. And we're starting to check references for that. So I'm very hopeful that by your May meeting, we'll have somebody selected to recommend and for a contract for you to vote on. The park renovation, I submitted two grant applications. The first was for Travel Oregon's Competitive and Recovery Grants Program. This was for irrigation of both of the parks. And I'd like to give a shout out to our Parks Committee Chairman Hall for providing a letter of support for that. I also submitted an AARP grant for one of our parks. And I'd like to give a shout out to our city clerk for bringing that opportunity to my attention. Held, had various contacts with other agencies throughout the month. In particular, on Monday, Mayor Bennett and I met with representatives of Lane County Economic Development so that we could start generating ideas on the East Main Street property. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Anybody?
I gotta go.
Go ahead.
Yeah. On the FRPs that you received, well, you received two, correct? Yes, sir. And on those two, none of it had, one of them had $300,000 on it, but it also said, "That's way low." And the other one had no dollar value on it. So what good are those? And the other question is, their architectural drawings or whatever they're proposing is for this entire building. So what happened to the plans that we have in these packets? That have that part as a city hall? Because as I read all of the stuff through the Ford Foundation, they can be in the same building, just different entities. So we can actually have that and it in, and it does not stop our funding on the Ford Foundation, which only will give us a third, regardless of what the cost is. They'll only give us a third of that money to fix it. So you're looking at a whole thing when we can get city hall down there quick. And that's in the plan, that everybody voted on, and the citizens voted on. Where is all that going? I mean, why does it all change that? On the first question regarding cost proposal, as I was preparing the RFP, and I worked with our city attorney on that, because I wanted to make sure that we were doing everything according to state procurement law. My understanding of the law and my work with the city attorney and his recommendation was to solicit competitive proposals, get a sense for firms' qualifications. At that point, whenever we select somebody, they give us a cost proposal. And if it's way out of league, at that point, we could look at somebody else. But the answer to that question is to make sure we're complying with the state procurement. Well, I understand that, because I've built plans. But still, in a proposal, you're gonna have a fee. You know, and having a committee to vote on somebody, it's just their qualifications all we're voting on. We're not voting on what it's gonna cost to do.
Yeah, we don't know that yet.
Yeah. So it's a whole process that's irrelevant, really. The FRPs, yeah, we got them, but all we're doing is saying, oh, this guy's built. The second one, we didn't even put anything in there. They're talking $9 million facilities they built, but that's not gonna happen. That's usually not there. And then it's for the entire place, and city hall's left completely out. Where we have money sitting down there in a building that's dilapidated. We could have it here in a heartbeat and still meet Ford Foundation recommendation on separation. So I don't know. I mean, their proposal is for the whole thing. Is that what we're going for, is the whole thing? I imagine whatever city council brings somebody onboard, we're gonna have these working remote for work sessions where we decide those or answer those questions and have the architects help us work through those options. So isn't it kind of misleading for the architect when we may not do the whole scope? I mean, if we're gonna get qualified individuals to do this, they have to have the right information to start with. I've done this a few times. This isn't my first rodeo in building plan or remodeling facilities in order to meet their standards. But they can only do that if they have the true scope. So I don't know, are we saving that for later or changing the scope on them? There's not a defined scope at this point with the request for proposals. We gave a general idea of the project. Whenever we bring somebody onboard, at that point, I imagine we'll hash that out in the contract. And then, of course, whenever the city council starts working with the architect, at that point, we'll work through the design, they'll prepare the construction documents that have the specified scope for the project. So if we want to turn this part of the library and that part of the city hall, the architect will draw that up for us and with our timeframe on that. June to July, working through final design with the architect. July, August, preparing construction documents and putting bids out there for contractors. Late fall, hiring the contractors, working through the permitting process. We started construction early in the winter with the goal of opening first or second quarter of 2022. Okay. That's enough for this section, because, like I said, I've built plans in places. It don't take that long. But that's just my opinion from working at the city of Eugene doing that. Anything else?
Anybody? I see the McDougall facility up on the hill. They look like they're pretty well getting to the end of that. Have they been contacting you, saying they want to come back for any final approval paperwork or anything like that?
There's been quite a bit of correspondence between their team, planners, and engineer, and they're very quickly whittling down on their list of objectives.
Okay, yeah, okay. I just saw it up there, and like I say, it looks awful nice. Looks like they're, they should be getting pretty close to the coming back to us for final approval, so that's good to hear. Next up is the public works report. Mr. Baker, you're out there? He's not?
I'm here. I don't have a staff report for tonight, Don.
Okay. Okay, nothing, okay? Good to hear. Anything for Max, for anyway? Next up is the police log. Seemed like there was some contact, some activities and things like that, so. The fellow, you're saying the stuff's, they're coming off Marina Vista?
No, no, I'm saying when you pass the bottom, they're going this way. They're going from here to the lake, you know?
Oh, towards the lake, I thought, okay, I understood. I thought maybe they're coming off Marina Vista. Well, the other direction.
Oh, they come from down here, and then they just wind it out when they get to the cemetery. And of course, the trucks are as bad.
Yeah.
Not quite as fast, obviously, but they displace a lot of wind.
Yeah.
And that sucks people in.
Okay. Any questions, comments on the police report?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Councilor Harris?
I'm sorry.
I was just gonna suggest again that we put that discussion about police coverage on our next work session. And we talk about, you know, talk about both what Mr. Wild is concerned with, we all are, and how much, how much activity of, you know,
Yeah.
Be in, all kinds of stuff going on. It's really becoming a problem. So maybe we can add that to have some real discussion. And then I didn't get it in here, but Mr. Bennett's letter and concern about that, the railroad railway. I think we better have a discussion about that and let them know that we're, we are discussing that and looking at what we need to keep doing.
Okay. We could add both of those.
I'd like to second that. You know, I've been in contact with various citizens throughout the community expressing their concern over this issue. I think that it's a valid concern. You know, I work in both the north.
Okay. Tim, your microphone went off.
You went on mute, Tim.
Holden. I think that, you know, I'd like to advocate for what Gail's saying and other, Mr. Bennett and other people are saying. I've been contacted by various citizens from the community expressing these concerns. And I think they're very valid concerns. I work on a regular basis in the North Saniam and the McKenzie area where the wildfires, you know, caused severe damage last year. And the difference between, you know, devastation and preservation often was these fire barriers and safety perimeters around houses and businesses. And I do have concern that the focus is on one particular area and that other areas have a similar hazard present to them. It's not just the railway corridor and the houses along Wetlow or up that area. There's Marina Vista houses, the other houses on, throughout the valley. I mean, we unfortunately live in a wooded area. And so there's a concern for all areas, you know, having a fire barrier around, around housing around here, not just along that railroad corridor.
Okay. Sounds good. Bringing up those points up at the work session on May 6th, they're all valid points.
Jeremy, do you think it would be worth reaching back out to Mr. Bennett and letting him know that we will be discussing it just so that people are aware we're paying attention?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Good, anything else, anybody? Okay, the first item of new business is a motion to approve community grant program application for the Pine Needlers Quilt Group in the amount of $1,500 for the 17th Annual Pine Needlers Quilt Show. Mr. Cottle, you want to speak to this first?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city has a community grant program where community groups can submit applications for funding. The Pine Needlers Quilt Group, they submitted an application for 1,500. The application is in the packet where they have a line item breakout of these items. And this would be to assist with their quilt show.
I understand this comes out of the transit room tax money. I think we've got some sort of side that we're, got the idea behind it?
Yeah.
Okay. We have supported this in the past, buying frames and other things. And I think they even had it on the parking lot here in the past. Does anybody have any questions about this for Mr. Cottle? If not, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve community grant program application for Pine Needlers Quilt Group in the amount of $1,500 for the 17th Annual Pine Needlers Quilt Show.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and second to approve the community grant program application for Pine Needlers Quilt Group in the amount of $1,500 for the 17th Annual Pine Needlers Quilt Show. On the last, the discussion or questions? I think it's gonna be on the last Friday, Saturday of the month of July.
That's right, I think it is. Where's it gonna happen at this year?
It's gonna be in Lundie.
Are they gonna do that again?
Out of Lundie. And in the gym, I believe.
That's where they've done it before.
That's the last weekend?
Yeah, that's right. It's a week, what we say, a week early, but that's only full actual weekend, you know?
Friday and Saturday or Saturday and Sunday?
Friday and Saturday.
Friday and Saturday, that's what I thought. It's, I guess, probably one of the only shows that's going on now. I know either College or Junction City or up there, I think, had one. But I don't know if theirs is still going or not. But I know the one in Pleasant Hill shut down, so it's a good show to go to. So if you're talking to friends, say good things about it. Okay. Anything else? All those in favor of motion to approve the community grant program application for Pine Needlers Quilt Group in the amount of $1,500 for the 17th Annual Pine Needlers Quilt Show, signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Good. Next up is a motion to approve the community grant program application for Lowell Summer School Recreation and Fitness Program in the amount of $2,000. Mr. Cottle, you want to speak to that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is another community grant application. The Lowell School District holds a summer recreation and fitness program every year. Historically, we have provided support to help make this program happen.
This is another good program. In addition to the quilt thing. The quilt thing, going back to that, they have drawing self-quilts, and usually they generate about, in the past, about $6,000 worth of money, which they use part of it to refund new quilts and everything, materials for the next year. The rest of it, they give to like the, I think, the fire hall, the food pantry, the Grange, and some other local organizations like that to support them. So there's the fine group. And now we'll go on to the summer school program. This, I think it's one of the better things that the school district does in the summertime to be commended for it. Do you have any questions for Mr. Cottle? Not seeing any? We have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the community grant program application for the Lowell School Summer Recreational Program and Fitness Program for the amount of $2,000.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, questions, or anything? Not hearing anything. All those in favor of motion to approve the community grant program application for Lowell School Recreation and Fitness Program in the amount of $2,000, signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Not hearing any? Not seeing any? Review liquor license renewal notifications from the Oregon Liquor Control Commission for Armando's 3 located at 243 North Moss Street. Mr. Cottle?
The Oregon Liquor Control Commission sends out renewal notifications for businesses that have liquor licenses within our jurisdiction. The city council has historically reviewed these notifications. The Liquor Control Commission gives jurisdictions three options. The first is to provide no response to them, which is the same as recommending approval. The second is request additional time to complete the next investigation. And the third is to file an unfavorable recommendation based on a certain criteria. So this is placed on your agenda for review, and staff's recommendation is to take no further action.
In the past on this, we have taken no action. In the past on this, uh, we have been taking no action. But no action means that we recommend it. Uh, if we take action, it would be to send a letter saying that uh, we'd like to uh make a comment for them not to approve it. Uh, I haven't seen anything that uh it's out of the sort with what they've been doing. Does anybody have any comments on that? Not hearing any, not seeing any? Uh, I'd say that it's a consensus uh of the council that we not respond to this uh request. I agree. Okay. Mr. Cottle, that's a no, nothing to do. Thing. Need a few of those.
It's a funny one, isn't it? Don't get whining, you're okay.
We're down to seven, resolution seven sixty now. Uh, page one oh six. In your booklet, that's now number four. Motion to approve resolution number seven sixty, a resolution adopting a cross connection and backflow opt-in, opt-out program. Mr. Cottle, you want to speak to that?
Thank you. This resolution sets forth the program that the public works directors spoke about at your March two work session, the public works director and I I worked together on this. And I'll turn it over to him if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor, and he can uh provide some more to tell about the program.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Cottle. So yeah, like Jeremy said, this is the program we discussed at the work session. Um, it's been a topic of discussion for the last couple of years. Finally, got it hashed out. Um, so the progress the city to pretty much proceed the testing if residents choose to opt in. Um, as you can see from the attached document, they also have the option to opt out. So just a resolution to streamline the process for both the residents and staff.
Okay. Did any of the councils have any questions, uh, Mr. Cottle or Mr. Baker? And for the people in town, about fifty of them that have sprinkling systems that require to have this, it gives them the opportunity to uh allow the city to go ahead and coordinate the inspection and uh for the residents. And I, if there's need for actual uh equipment change or anything like that, is that then worked out with the uh resident or is that through the city? That we 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 uh fund it and fill them or we just do the inspection?
Yeah, that would all be worked out with the individual property owners.
Okay, if they failed?
Yeah, yep.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have a motion for resolution seven sixty?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number seven sixty, a resolution adopting a cross connection and backflow opt-in, opt-out program.
You have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We have further discussion or questions on this? All those in favor of resolution seven sixty, a resolution adopting a cross connection and backflow opt-in, opt-out program? Signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, not hearing any, not seeing any? Next up is a motion to approve a water treatment plant tracer study with civil west engineering in the amount of nine thousand and three dollars and to authorize city administrator to sign and accept the scope of services. Mr. Cottle, you want to speak to this?
Thank you. I'll turn this over to Mr. Baker if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Cottle. Uh, once again, brought this to the uh work session and actually the work session prior to that. Uh, this is a tracer study, chlorine tracer study for the water treatment facility. Um, there's three scopes proposed on there. One is to verify the current uh value that we are permitted to, and then the other is to uh allow for an increase in flow. Um, it should be three separate tests performed, as you can see in the scope there. Um, this is required by the state anytime we want to change the amount of water that we produce to verify that we're still making safe drinking water.
I'll actually boost it to the higher, let you boost it to the higher level for a while and see how it works.
Yeah, so we'll do a controlled, you know, in-house controlled experiment. Um, we'll increase the chlorine dosage significantly and then increase the water coming in and going out to see the adjustment. Um, some fancy calculations and it'll spit out a number. Um, and then we'll do it again to verify it during the state. We still have to wait for approval. Um, and then go from there. The intent on this, um, like I said, the work session is to be able to produce um about fifteen percent more gallons per minute during peak hours. Um, this would allow us to use that flow year round, um, but specifically we would be using it between May and October, which is usually our dry times. Um, and this would just help, you know, alleviate the demand peak a little bit um on the normal um high demand hour. So morning time for sprinklers most time and then the late afternoons.
Any further questions of uh Mr. Baker? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the water treatment plant tracer study with civil west engineering in the amount of not to exceed or what of nine thousand three dollars and to authorize the city manager to sign and accept the scope of services.
Third second?
I'll second that.
Okay, good to hear. Any other questions? Comments? Okay, not hearing? Not seeing any? All those in favor of motion to approve a water treatment plant tracer study with civil west engineering in the amount of nine thousand and three dollars and to authorize the city administrator to sign and accept the scope of services, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Not hearing, not seeing? Next up?
We got a question.
Go ahead.
Hey, Max, how long is this um test? I mean, is this like, once it's done, it's done for good? Or is this something that needs to be repeated on a on a uh cycle?
Yeah, so once it's done, that's the value that we hold. Um, unless we were to make an upgrade to the plant or, you know, later down the road, maybe request additional capacity. Yeah, so once you're locked in until you change any treatment or anything else, that's you have the ability to go up to that rate. Yep.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else? Good question. Next up is a motion to authorize city administrator to purchase a digester blower for for the an amount not to exceed six thousand dollars. Mr. Cottle?
I'll let uh the public works director speak to this item as well.
Mr. Baker?
Uh, thank you. Uh, yeah, as mentioned before, the work session, this is the replacement uh digester blower. Currently only have one in operation. Um, we are in trial period as discussed over the last several months. Um, this would replace the non-existent blower and have a designated backup.
So is this actually buying two of them?
This would have two of them, yep, for rotation, so.
That's why, what I mean, this six thousand dollars is buying two uh digester blowers.
No, sir. Six thousand is buying one blower. We already purchased the other blower in November of nineteen.
Yeah. It it's in operation now?
The the last one we purchased, yep.
Okay. Didn't you? Didn't I understand to say that uh we need three? Or is that something else?
So we we would need to, um, you know, to do the lead lag cycle, have one off for maintenance. Um, and then we have one currently at the plant, the last one that failed. Um, we did get a rough quote to get that working, to have a critical spare on the shelf. Um, we're gonna get an updated quote on that and see if that would be realistic. So, but two would be good in case the event of a failure one. We would still be up and running with the one while we can get another one. Um, downtime for maintenance and and so on.
I was just hoping the six thousand was gonna buy me two.
Yeah, so was I.
Any uh questions for Mr. Cottle or Mr. Baker by the council? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to authorize the city administrator to purchase a digester blower for an amount not to exceed six thousand dollars.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion, anybody? Okay, not hearing any, not seeing any? Uh, all those in favor of motion to authorize the city administrator to purchase a digester blower for an amount not to exceed six thousand dollars, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Not hearing any? We need, we got a second one. Okay. Uh, other business, anybody? Okay. Mayor comments?
Uh, Dawn, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I didn't realize you were done. Uh, Jeremy, can I throw one more thing at you? I know you're gonna probably hit me. Um, could we add to our next um our work session? Let's let's talk about what we learn in um talking with these architect companies. Let's let's have that discussions as a whole group so that everybody's kind of you know, aware and on the same page when we go to vote on it in the next meeting. Does that make sense? I mean, by then we will have, we we will have talked with these people and done some reference checks and so forth. I just thought it would might, it might be good to uh make sure everybody's on the same page in terms of what we're doing before they have to vote on it. Please. Thank you.
Good. And on the uh part about the parts and rec, you might want to invite the uh uh leadership or members from the Park and Recs Committee to uh attend that meeting to get input from them for what was meant by uh the parts and recs uh master plans. So that we uh sometimes what's written down, what uh people read and what they intended uh sometimes uh it can be misinterpreted. Okay. Uh, this has to do with Oak Ridge, and I think anybody going, this was from the lane act, by the way. This has to do with Oak Ridge. Anybody going through Oak Ridge knows that it's single lane going into town, single lane going out of town, and if you get behind a big semi two, three, four, that it's your time to pass. And I've done it myself. So, you know, you're not speeding, but you do have a chance to get around people. There's no there's been talk of putting a passing lane to the west side of Oak Ridge, but uh you know, those things, uh, they gotta do an environmental study, so they're probably five years away. But what the uh state highway, ODOT was proposing for Oak Ridge was that uh at Oak Ridge, if you've driven through there, they don't have any bicycle lanes. They barely, I don't even think they have sidewalks, have to think back. So what do you do? You have four lanes of traffic. So what the uh uh lane or what the uh state ODOT wanted to do was they wanted to change it from four lanes to three lanes. Make the center lane a turn lane. And then that way they could put in some sidewalks and uh uh bike lanes. Well, that was all uh good by the state until they uh got the mayor and the city council of Oak Ridge involved. And they didn't like the idea at all. So uh uh they they didn't uh, so they they rejected the plan. The other thing is, is uh, this goes back from memory, but uh, the uh ODOT is working, making the travel from uh Eugene to Benita uh widening that to four lanes. And uh so, and it's about two hundred million dollars to widen it to four lanes. Two hundred million dollars is uh part of what they want to spend for a belt line up there around the river area. And so somebody, whether I think it was ODOT, maybe for the state, came down and said, we'd we'd like to widen this and uh uh, so then uh but then now there's there's concern that that's gonna impact the wetlands and everything around it. So uh, bottom line, it probably, same thing will happen in Oak Ridge as happens going out to Benita. Benita will stay two lanes, Oak Ridge will stay four lanes and uh that's, but uh, anyway, that's some little things that are going on in the Lane Act world. That's all I have. Any community comments?
Yeah.
Okay, we have uh one community comment in the house.
My name's Paul Reed and I'm a sixty-twoy-third. I concur with Mr. Wild about these two motorcycles, I hope. I can hear them from my place, and I've also seen them ripping up moss trees. From the store to Third Avenue. I don't know how fast, but they got full throttle going up. And uh, maybe drive a man a time before somebody gets killed. The other thing is can we get an update on uh I know something's going on at Paul Fisher, an update on uh sprinkler system on the park? Thanks.
You like to speak to that?
The sprinkler system, yes. Behind you. Uh, the public works director and I have been working over the past few weeks on getting different landscaping firms out here, give us some quotes. It's taken a little bit longer than what we were anticipating. Uh, but we have two quotes, I believe. Uh, and we're trying to get a third one. We've had different firms look at complete replacement versus repairing the system that we've had. And that's, our goal is to have three quotes together that we can focus the council hopefully about anyway.
Is that from both parks or?
Max, do, are are you one? Do you have anything to add to that question?
Uh, no, just that we we did do a look of um R and D at Paul Fisher Park. Um, we had two different outfits that submitted quotes. Go ahead and look at the existing system and see what it would take to of it, um, in lieu of replacing it, as the city administrator said. Um, they did do some pretty extensive work on the south side, changed some heads and everything. Um, very positive about the feedback we received from them, and they're pretty confident that the system in the um, obviously, there's gonna be a cost to get it working, but um would be significantly less than redoing it.
Okay. Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, um, there's another question on that. Are we considering using the wells at Paul Fisher?
I can speak to that as the mayor. Uh, see, that's a conversation that public works director and I have had. Our game plan is to get the irrigation system in, get that knocked out. And then over the summer, see what we have to do to get a firm that specializes in wells and all that good stuff to come out and see what what we need to do or if we can even can tap into those wells. Explore the possibility of drilling a well at Roland Rock Park even. So that's, you know, we want to get the irrigation syst- system in, get that up and running, and then pivot to exploring the well option.
Initially, they'll use the city water. It'd be good to use well water. Cheaper.
cheaper.
Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah. My name's Steve Paulson. I live at five twenty Sunridge Lane. And I want to just say that I fully support Mr. Bennett's letter. Uh, and I appreciate the counselor Stratus's acknowledgement that there are more areas than just the railroad right of way that are at issue with respect to hazardous conditions. And I'd like to emphasize one related uh area, and that is the uh meadow area up above the railroad right of way. Uh, I tried to walk that area this weekend. A few years ago, I could easily circumnavigate it. It was well maintained. And that's no longer the case. You cannot circumnavigate that three point two acre parcel. Um, it is completely overgrown with blackberries on the east end, and that should never have been allowed to happen. The city has had funds donated to it to maintain that area, and it's clear that that has not happened. So I would like you to make that part of your discussion. So I would like you to make that part of your discussion, that those blackberries, if they catch on fire. Uh, you know, everything else you do, you know, will be worthless. Uh, so I appreciate that you're going to be taking up this, uh, discussion at your next work session. And hopefully we can discuss it further at a, uh, council session. Thank you.
Thank you. Add that on to the, uh, the details of that and, uh. What the requirements of the city, uh, are as compared to the, uh, blackberries and the cost or if you have any estimates, uh, between now and then, how much that would cost? See what, if you, if you don't get anything, then you don't have to, but if you can get something, bring it on back.
Sure.
Anything else? Anybody? Okay. Not hearing anything? Not seeing anything? We're adjourned at seven fifty-two. Everyone have a good evening.
Excellent. Good night.
Night.